Good evening. I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris is not with us. Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Daisart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Before we go on to the first item on the agenda, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate and to recognize Ms. Cookie Munt, who made the front page of the St. Bernard magazine.
There you go.
And Ms. Munt is, of course, Assistant Principal at Chalmette High School and does a wonderful job. And so she's an unsung hero, but she's been at Chalmette for many, many years, probably 50 years or more.
Over 50.
And anyway, congratulations to her. And also, I'd like to take this time to give a shout-out to our own Chalmette High School Owl, Mitch Robinson, who is playing tonight with the New York Knicks, and they're playing against the Pelicans.
Oh.
And I think, I think it might be-
He's healthy enough to play tonight?
That's what they said. He's playing tonight.
Okay.
So anyway, congratulations to Mitch. He was always fun to watch in his high school years, and it's just such a great opportunity for him to move up to the professionals and to watch our local hero, Mitch Robinson. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda are the committee assignments. And in your folder are the committee chairpersons, and for the minutes, I will read those. It is Sean Warner and Catherine Lemoine with the Executive Committee, Kelly Lee Bowman, Carly Jackson, Finance Committee, Millie Harris, Henry Rodriguez, Insurance Committee, Kisa Rodney, Don- Donald Campbell with Building Grounds Committee, Rosalyn White with the Education Committee, and also Sean Warner, sorry. Okay. And then with the external responsibilities and committees is Rosalyn White with Federal Governmental Relations, Carly Jackson with Louisiana Governmental Relations, Catherine Lemoine with Louisiana School Boards Association Relations, Mr. Don Campbell with LSU Cooperative Extension Relations, Millie Harris Head Start Policy Council Member, Catherine Lemoine Higher Education Relations, Sean Warner Bessie Relations, and Henry Rodriguez with the Louisiana Legislative Relations. Any discussion or comments at this time? Okay, and these will go throughout the year of 2024. Thank you. Next item on the agenda are the communications update. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Sarah Felk. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys tonight? Okay? All right, so I've made your communications packet for the month of February. Inside of that packet are all of the press releases that we've put out in the last month. It's a pretty thick packet. We've had a lot of good news to share. And then I've also got some little statistics and stuff for our website and our Facebook pages, like how many viewers we get, what our most shared and engaged post was this month. And then at the very end, I've got our super news for the month of February. We've got a lot of features on there, including Andrew Jackson Middle and Chalmette Elementary. Those are the two schools you'll see us visit in this month's super news. So without further ado, please enjoy.
And now from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Howdy. I'm Barry Lemoine.
And I'm Sarah Felk. We're coming to you today from Chalmette High School on the set of the upcoming production of Oklahoma.
We'll begin today in a land far away as we see the adventure that was all part of the Chalmette High School Japanese Cultural Arts Club and the language classes that took part in an eight-day, seven-night trip to the iconic Asian country. Dr. Tara Sanchez, a veteran teacher at Chalmette High School, said the trip was made possible by the Japanese consulate and its cultural bridge project. Chalmette High was one of only 11 schools from across the country selected to participate in this exchange program.
The trip provided all expenses for seven students in one chaperone, including airfare, bullet train transportation, hotels, meals, and admission to a number of attractions. Linda Ross, a longtime sponsor of the Japanese Cultural Arts Club and this year's High School Teacher of the Year, also went on this week-long sojourn. Stops included Tokyo, Sendai City, and Marumori Town, where students were housed with local families.
It truly was an eye-opening and life-changing experience for these students, and we are grateful to all that made it possible.
Others who enjoyed a positive experience lately were our employees, who took part in the first round of Art for the Heart, a wellness series. Funded by a grant with the St. Bernard Parish Hospital, this new after-school program is geared towards bringing people together for some healthy fun. This month's offerings brought dance, fitness, and yoga to the MoMA Center, with a number of other classes, like painting, taking place next month.
Also taking place this spring were the Goat in the School Shows, where our fifth graders learned to write plays of their own. Recently, professional actors from the production company brought some of last year's offerings to some of our students here, including some of the fun we see at Miro Elementary. The big showcase, which includes all of our elementary schools, takes place in April, and everyone is invited to see the students writing "Go" from the page to the stage.
Oh my gosh, dude, are you kidding me right now?
That's how I felt when you led us into a desert.
We don't even have the correct clothing on for this weather.
Look, I think I see a winter clothing shop. Now stop complaining and come on.
And now let's go to AJ to visit our Colonel to see what's popping. Take it away, kids.
Hi, and welcome to our super news segment today. I'm Cody Cambridge.
I'm Grace Dewey.
And I'm Anari Jackson. And the three of us are happy to share three super stories with all of you.
We'll begin in our courtroom as we witness some of the fun when our Colonel Drama Club presented Law &amp; Order: Fairy Tale Division. In this wacky comedy, characters from famous fairy tales and nursery rhymes are investigated and prosecuted for their actions. Twenty-six of our talented students brought this zany production to life under the direction of three of our club sponsors. It was family-friendly fun for all. Congrats to who took part.
An Indian walk away free pigs haven't collected on that windfall of insurance money you so desperately desire. That is my suspicion. That is what really happened. How do you plead?
Okay, we did it.
And while these students were onstage, several other AJ students were winning awards for what they put on the page. Recently, 16 of our AJ writers wowed the judges in the District Young Authors Competition. These outstanding authors placed across 10 different categories, including six students who placed in first and are moving on to the state competition. We cannot wait to see what all they achieve. I guess you can say they really had the right stuff.
And finally, as we prepare for our leave test, our Colonels and teachers are hard at work, helping to stay engaged like using hands-on labs and experiments to understand scientific concepts in real life. Our math teachers who are using data in a variety of ways to celebrate student growth. We also have a number of enrichment opportunities to help us grow. We appreciate all of the adults who helped prepare us for state tests.
And we appreciate all of you for tuning in today. Now back to the good folks from Penn TV.
Bye.
Bye.
Good job, Colonels. Another proud Andrew Jackson graduate is also deserving of some kudos as our very own Diana Daisart was recently elected by a unanimous vote to serve as the President of the St. Bernard Parish School Board.
Catherine Lemoine will once again serve as the Vice President. Congratulations to you both, and thank you for your commitment to our students, teachers, family, and community.
Just want to say thank you to all the board members for giving me this opportunity to serve as Vice President, and very much looking forward to working with you all to collaborate for, in the best interest of our students and our teachers and staff. Thank you.
Another dynamic duo also made the news recently when Chalmette High seniors Alex Jorns and Kenny Quack were named National Merit Finalists based on their abilities, accomplishments, and success in rigorous college prep studies. Congratulations to these outstanding Owl scholars.
And now we are at Chalmette Elementary School as our Vikings will share some of their super news. Take it away, kids.
Hi, I'm Carter.
And I'm Samuel, and we'll start our segment today with coconuts.
Recently, our fifth grade students partnered with a famous Mardi Gras club and used their artistic talent to paint coconuts for the crew of Zulu.
Here we see members of our fifth grade team working with our art teacher to bring some beauty into the carnival fun as painted coconuts are one of the most prized throws in all of carnival. It was really cool for our students to take part in such a great Mardi Gras tradition.
Our Viking school family also worked together for a special event when we hosted a Community School Work Day. Parents, volunteers, school board members, and teachers all picked in to transform our school into a winter wonderland. It's no wonder we have such an awesome school.
Our third, fourth, and fifth grade students also took part in a very special event, working with the folks from New Orleans Pelicans for a junior training camp at our school. This visit focused on the development of our young athletes through a variety of fundamental drills, helping us to learn the game of basketball.
The training camp also promotes sportsmanship, encouragement, and the importance of living a healthy and active lifestyle. It was a great experience for all of us who hooped it up.
Thanks to the Pelicans for the visit, and thank you for watching. We'll see you next time from Chalmette Elementary. Bye.
Nice job, Vikings. We also offer our recognition, appreciation, and gratitude to the outstanding support employees for the 2023-2024 school year. Each of our schools and facilities nominated a coworker for their professionalism and dedication to their jobs and the students. And like any goal, the best way to achieve it is as a cohesive team, united in purpose. And these outstanding employees have exhibited excellence in their commitment to that goal. Congratulations to this year's winners.
Also deserving a shout-out are the men and women in our maintenance departments, in our bus garage, and our bus drivers, who worked during and after the recent freeze, which allowed our students to safely resume their learning on campus. Thanks for all that you do.
Music students from our district also deserve credit for their talent and musicianship. Recently, four outstanding performers were named to the Louisiana Music Educators Association District VI Honor Band.
Lola Schneider from Lacoste Elementary School, and Colin Tonry, Orlando Espinoza Martinez, and Daniel Marchiafava from Chalmette High School were recognized and participated in the LMEA District VI Honor Band Concert at Tulane University. It was quite an honor, and we are proud of these talented students who represent us so well.
And speaking of music, it's time to dust off your cowboy boots, grab your hat, and join the Chalmette High School Voices for an unforgettable journey to the heart of the prairie when CHS talented performers take center stage in their upcoming performance of the beloved musical, Oklahoma.
This Rodgers and Hammerstein classic will captivate audiences with its infectious energy, heartwarming story, and unforgettable tunes. Oklahoma promises to be a toe-tapping, hand-clapping, good time.
And before we go, let's take a look at some of the Mardi Gras fun that was all part of the carnival season. And we'll see you next time on Super News.
Where we always let the super news roll.
See you at Oklahoma, y'all.
Uh-huh.
Well, thank you very much, Sarah, and Barry, and Jack, for super news. It's always wonderful to see so many accomplishments of our talented and very academically bright students. So such good news throughout the parish with so many accomplishments. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks again. And just a special shout-out to, we have two Merit Scholars this year. That's quite an accom-
National Merit Finalists.
National Merit Finalists. That's quite an accomplishment, and so congratulations to them and to all the, all their teachers who have worked with them academically. And it's just great. That's not a, an easy accomplishment.
No, it's not.
So congratulations.
And the two National Merit Finalists, and then we have a National Merit Commended Student as well. One step right there with it.
And who was that?
Peyton Sheiller.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Next item's an approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee Meeting Minutes of February 20th, 2024 into the minutes of the February 27th, 2024 regular monthly meeting. There's a motion by Ms. Jackson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Own favors? Please cast your votes.
Mr. Warner? Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item's an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2024 as published on February 23rd, 2024. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next is a review of the performance contracts.
And this is informational for you. We went over it at the committee meeting. These are the 23 administrators whose contracts are renewed for a two-year period beginning July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2026.
Are there any questions at this time? Mr. Long?
It goes without saying that we are so blessed to have such great administrators, and they continue to do a fantastic job, so, you know, I appreciate them. And I think the board does also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, this does not require board action. Next item are personnel changes for February 2024. And good evening.
Good evening.
I recognize you. I'm sorry.
Okay, in front of you, you should have the personnel minutes. And on it are really just three changes since last week, last Tuesday, and they are three retirees. Three people who will be retiring at the end of this school year. First, we have Monica Nowar. She currently is an instructional coach at Andrew Jackson Middle School. Mary Cochran, who is an elementary teacher, well, she's a teacher at Araby Elementary, and Melinda Decker, who is a teacher leader at Araby Elementary. And they will be sorely missed.
Are there any questions at this time or comments?
These are just three wonderful educators who have contributed, you know, a great many years in their career here with us. So we wish them well in their retirement. They've done an outstanding job throughout their careers with us.
And I know we spoke of all the other retirees on the list at the committee meeting, but again, we want to thank all of them for their many years of service with the St. Bernard Parish School System and to wish them a very happy retirement. Okay, anyone else?
And as everybody can see, as we have many of our employees retiring, we're always out there, aren't we, Ms. Pritchard?
Always looking.
Looking for certified teachers as well as other qualified employees to become members of our school family. So if you're out there listening, we're a great place to work.
Yes.
And please fill out your applications. We welcome anyone at any time, so.
Yes, always waiting and ready. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Pritchard. All righty. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the School Board Member Training Certificates for 2023 calendar year, School Board Member Training Resolution. And there was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? Okay, and we named those individuals last, at the committee meeting, last meeting. Okay. There being no other discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next-
And as per, just to let everybody know, as per state revised statutes of state of Louisiana, that it will be, these certificates will be published as official minutes in our official journal as required by law.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Next item's an approval of the Certified School Board Member for 2023 calendar year. There was a recommendation by the committee, and these also were named at the committee meeting. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? Okay. There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item's an approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise for bread and bread products for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee, and with us, we have Mr. Morale. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, there was a recommendation. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion or questions at this time? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next is an approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise for bid for milk and milk products for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next is an approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise for food products for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. White. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item's an approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise to bid for fresh fruits and vegetables produce for the period of August 1st, 2024 through July 1st, 2025. And there was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Warner. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next is an approval of tabulation of proposals for wireless, thank you, Mr. Morale, for wireless networks. And there was a recommendation by the committee.
I'll move. Can we approve it?
There's a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Anyone? And of course, you have until before the committee meeting to place any additional items on there. All right, next, superintendent's notes. Ms. Votchay.
Okay, included in your packet is your general fund budget to actual report for, on the month of January 2024, for your information. And just to reiterate, upcoming events that we have. Thursday night at Chalmette High School, Thursday night, February 29th, will be the Rotary Club is hosting their annual spelling day in the Chalmette High School main cafeteria. The program starts at 7:00. You get there a little bit early so you can get a good parking spot and get into the cafeteria. I think it'll be a very nice evening, especially for those of you who are interested in spelling bees. It's always, no, it's really always a very, very nice function. That'll be Thursday night with the Rotary Club. We will, as the super news indicated, next weekend, March 8th through 10th, Chalmette High will be having the play Oklahoma. It's really going to be very, very nice. You can get on the website through Eventbrite, go ahead and purchase those tickets. The kids will be thrilled to have you come and see them perform. It should be a very nice performance. Yes, so.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's a, I didn't know that, but I would assume it would be. It's getting close then, okay. We're going to be doing our annual staffing for next school year. Ms. Pritchard and I will be meeting with the principals on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, March 4th, 5th, and 6th to finalize those slots that we have in preparation for our transfer day and our job fair to gear up for next school year. As we mentioned as well, last week, on March the 14th, we'll be completing the Cognia Review, which is our accreditation agency, and presenting that report to them. And we're very confident that we will again achieve our district-wide accreditation. And just again, I say this every time I talk with people. You know, the St. Bernard Parish School System was the first school system in the state of Louisiana to have every one of our schools accredited by, at that time, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, which has now evolved into the accrediting agency called Cognia that does that for school systems and schools throughout the country. Another reminder again, and I will do that until we get to that point, but the Special Olympics on Friday, March the 22nd, in the Chalmette High Stadium at 9:30 that morning. It's always a very wonderful day. Many of the high school students will be the buddies for the Special Olympians, and the kids just have a fantastic time. The community comes out to support very heavily that particular endeavor. So we're going to be seeing lots of people from throughout St. Bernard Parish there to support our students in the Special Olympics. And lastly, at, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, the Women's Professional Network will be sponsoring their mentoring event again at Chalmette High School for many of the young women who are attending school there, primarily some juniors and seniors. And that's going to be on March the 20th. It's always a very, very nice event. The girls get a lot, I think, out of it, and it also lets them see the professional women who are within our community as role models, and they can up front and close ask questions and talk with them about specified topics. So it's always a wonderful event, and we do that in partnership with the local Chamber of Commerce. So, very, very eventful time. And as we've said before, we're going to be doing all kinds of state testing between now and the end of the school year in May. It just seems like that's all we do with kids. But we'll be doing our mandated testing individually and then in group from now until the end of May.
Are there any questions? I have one, Ms. Votchay. I have one, Ms. Votchak. Let's see. With the accreditation, is that going to still be like virtual, or are they gonna?
No, it's going to be virtually done.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
This year, they've changed, they've changed the format. We had to go through a year-long self-evaluation process, where we gather all the materials, answer the questions, write responses, talk about our programs. They did a lot of validation of materials that we sent, and then between now and March 14th, they'll be requesting additional information. And then on the 14th, I'll have to do a presentation via Zoom, you know, a presentation to the accrediting committee about our system and our programs and such. So we should hear shortly thereafter.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Jackson. All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Sign if I'm saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.